We're going to go right into the regular town council meeting. So if you'd please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Talk to you, ladies and gentlemen.
Absolutely.
Father, Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for another wonderful day. Lord, we ask that you'll bless this meeting. You will be with those who couldn't be here tonight. We ask that you'll lead this council. Bless them in order to make decisions that are in best interest of your name and the community. We ask all this. Amen.
Amen. Everybody, be seated, please. And so Ms. Thomas can get out here quick. We have a special presentation or a request from the Tazza Torpedoes. It's going to be a donation request.
Okay. As you guys heard, my name is Leanne Thomas. I was a member of the Tazza Torpedoes Swim Team from when I was four until I was 18, and I'm currently the team's treasurer and I'm one of the acting captains. The Torpedoes has been a team in Tazza for about 40 years, and we take pride in teaching kids the valuable skills of sportsmanship, confidence, and of course, learning how to swim, because I think everybody deserves a chance to learn how to swim. As treasurer, me and the president met and we decided to keep our dues low because we want to give every kid in the community a chance. Sorry, I'm nervous. We want to give every kid in the community a chance to be able to learn how to swim. And we don't think it's fair to have outrageously priced dues because we want to give even the poorer kids a chance to swim. All the money that goes into the team, from concessions, from dues, to fundraisers, all of it goes to the kids. It's completely volunteer around. None of the coaches, none of the executive members get any of that. So even along with fundraising, we're just requesting a little bit of funds come our way because we've had a hard year from COVID, and we really like to help keep the team afloat.
Do you know on average how many kids swim for Tazza Torpedoes?
In the years past, it's usually between 50 and 80.
Let's see. I've been on this swim meet.
Well, I've been out there. It gets crowded when they hold a meet, that's for sure.
What are you, I mean, for uniforms, for the kids?
It mainly be just maintaining the team because our equipment is really, really old, and things are starting to break, and landlines themselves are really expensive. And so running the meets costs money, like the programs, run the computer costs money. I'm trying to think of all the things.
What are your questions?
Just any amount of money to help.
So we have a formula based on the amount of people that are in the typical organization. Does anybody have that handy?
Yep, it's right here.
Okay.
Number of participants between 51 and 150. Donation is typically between 50 and 400. And I could see going up to the top.
Is that correct for your number?
I have no clue. This is the first time I've ever asked to give money.
I mean, is that correct for the number of people involved?
Oh, yeah.
51 to 100?
Yeah.
I would say that we should approve 400. Tazza Torpedoes has been an institution I've been taught given.
Yeah, we break the cycle there. We're going to, we're going to be able to. And that's up to you. I don't get a vote down in my, so it's your guys. So if you want to go five?
Can I hear six? Can I hear seven?
She's sitting here, she's like, sure, come on.
Yeah, keep going, keep going.
I think there's a motion on the floor for 400.
Okay. Well, and I think he amended it to 500.
On the floor.
Who made that motion?
It's like making a motion to approve 500.
I'll make a motion to approve 500 of these, this settlement.
Now there's two motions on.
Let's back up for just a minute. Who made the $400 motion?
I did.
Okay, David, you can't amend her motion. She's got to do it.
Okay. Well, then I'll amend the motion to be 500.
Okay, so now you just need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
My concern is we need to go back and revisit the formula. If we're going to have to door the formula every time somebody comes.
Well, I think we may need to revisit the formula because we've got 1 to 10 participants, 11 to 50, and then 51 to 150. So you might need to break that down to maybe 51 to 100.
That's all I'm suggesting is we need to go back and revisit that so we don't have to.
Right, absolutely.
Change our rules every time somebody comes.
I agree.
Well, I think maybe, I think the last time it was 1,000.
Okay, so we've got a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of donating $500 to Tazza Torpedoes? Stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Cut her cheek. There you go.
You did good. I've already told you two months ago.
Did you have an event?
Yeah.
She's got an event request too.
Oh, okay.
So to continue fundraising, we'd actually like to start hosting an annual 5K run walk at the Charm Park. I don't know, the logistics are really like getting that, like how we get that. We'd like to host it like around the lake because I know the cross-country team will have 5K runs. And we were hoping, if we could do it this summer, to host it on June 9th at 9:00 a.m.
I don't think we'd need a vote on that, would we?
No, you don't.
I just don't know. She would just need to get with Richard.
Yeah, just get with Richard, and he'll make sure that date's fine, or he'll make sure it's fine.
Okay.
He'll schedule.
I think that'd be good, by the way. The more events you can have out there, the better the community feels.
Absolutely.
And all the proceeds from it are going to go directly to the team.
Me and Joe will be there running.
And bring us back another championship for the Torpedoes.
That's right.
Now we're regular season finally.
What are the requirements? Like you said you were with them since you were four. What are the requirements to join?
Yeah, the youngest we accept is four years old, and you have to be at least all the way up to 18. So if you're 18 before, 4 to 18 before June 1st, which is usually our 12th day for age. And we like that they can swim at least like unassisted, but we've worked with kids who can't swim at all before. I couldn't swim at all before I joined the team.
Okay. I was just wondering for my own kids.
Yeah, we can join. I'll probably get a coach.
I've got to take it from her.
I saw this kid, very stubborn.
She did, and she could get through to him. It's up to me to try.
Yeah, well, I got a couple stubborn ones too.
So where do you go to sign up?
We're actually going to have our registration on May 24th and 25th, I think. I'm about, once the sign is ready, I'm going to see if I can hang it up.
So make sure Richard has that, and he can put it, have it put on the Lincolnshire page, and we can put it on the town page, just so people know.
And it's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00, May 24th and 25th. And it'll just be afterward, yeah.
Y'all have schedules you put out?
We have a meet schedule. I don't know off the top of my head, but we have a Facebook group. If anybody wants to join that, it's, if you're interested in joining the team, it's the Tazza Torpedoes Swim Team. It's a private Facebook group. There's like a group page you can like, and that's not that one. Nobody knows how to get rid of that one.
Somebody created it?
Yes.
There's not any candidates anymore?
And we hope that helps.
Yeah, they were able to help a lot.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one, and you can stay or you can leave. It's up to you.
Okay, I'm going to go.
Good job, thanks.
Next on the agenda is, last I skipped on, is the new business recognition, nothing scheduled. So next, the approval of the minutes of the budget work session and council meeting of April 13th, 2021. Need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll send the motion.
Second, there we go. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the budget work session and council meeting minutes of April 13th, 2021? Stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, minutes approved. Next is the approval of the financial statements and financial report of April 2021. Need a motion for approval?
Come on, Dave.
I got the first one.
So move. You get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. The financial statements, financial report are approved. Next is the committee conference update. Councilmember Davis will give us a planning commission committee update.
The planning commission met last Monday, and we are going to, in just a little while, Brad will be reading a revision to part of our code. We had to talk about, just remember the guy that came in, it's called Flea Market, that's in the old Magic Mark Building. He was talking about the permit licenses for the individuals that were coming into his establishment to sell, and because of that, we had to look at the code to figure out what the fees would be. And it's, there wasn't anything that directly addressed that. So we had to go through and decide on several different things on what we thought was appropriate and coincided with the Virginia Code. In doing that, Brad has also suggested that we may want to look at the entire section. I believe it's Section 15 of our code. Yeah, it's outdated. There are references in there to things that Virginia Code sections that have changed.
Right.
We just need to go through and clean it up.
So if I understood correctly, what he was looking for was his business entity would get the business license, and then all the people that came in, they would fall under his license?
That's not really how it works.
I don't, I don't know. I think that's what he was asking for.
Well, he was asking, he understood that the people that were selling there as a business, that were set up there all the time, they would have to have their own business license. But he was looking for, he wanted some consideration for somebody that was just setting up there like one weekend.
Gotcha. Okay. From town, right?
Huh?
If you live in town, is that accurate?
From an administrative standpoint, I think the planning commission just decided that that really wasn't feasible.
It'd be hard to manage.
Yeah.
Chris would be busy.
Nope, not in it. It's the code enforcement, yeah. So, but we talked about it extensively and talked with Leanne on the administrative part of it, and I think that we've got it to where it is feasible. And that's what we're going over in just a little while. And we suggest that we go ahead and set it for a public hearing. Of course, after Brad raises it.
Well, it would be a read, it would be a, for purposes of protocol, we would set the public hearing for purposes of having input on it and then have the adoption of that after the public hearing.
Right.
So what you have in front of you really is what would I propose with the planning commission's recommendation we will consider. It's out of Chapter 15, it's the License Permit and Business Regulation Chapter or Town Code, specific follows under Uniform People. Part of it does with regard to the license fee and tax, which we would then need to go, what I recommend that you go in and change. Since we had some competing code sections, what I think I explained to the planning commission, you had one set that was of, or say, set, the part of the code that was adopted in 1986, another part that was adopted in 1995, and then it was never really meshed together to where the two of them worked well together by the language that was already in place. And then you've had changes within the Virginia Code, the definition of things that have changed, which made it even more muddy for purposes of trying to enforce it as far as the town was concerned. So what I recommended in the draft to change, you can see there, Sections 15-44, which is the license fee and tax, as it applies to itinerant merchants and peddlers. It simplifies it based on a $500 maximum state limit that you can charge an itinerant peddler, or merchant, or a, itinerant merchant or peddler, excuse me. So what we have then, under paragraphs one and two, our initial code didn't really distinguish between the obtaining the business license and then the tax on that license. So what I've gone in and proposed for you is the two different actual paragraphs. Said in paragraph one, "A fee for the initial issuance of such license for the first year of the business is an operation in the amount of $20." That doesn't change what Leanne's been doing, but it clarifies that it is a fee for the issuance of the license. Paragraph two, it talks about the tax itself. "A tax based upon the gross receipts for the business for the second year and every year thereafter that the business is in operation based upon the following calculations." There are several different paragraphs, A through either J or K, I believe, maybe even further. This one that is being modified strictly deals with itinerant merchants and peddlers, which you're dealing with a fellow down here at the former Magic Mark Building. $20 per month for every month beyond the first month of licensure, which basically pays that tax which gives him the license. And then, or he can then do, or he, she can do a $200 per year. That keeps it to where if you did it $20 per month, it would be $240. They can get it, basically a benefit to themselves if they did it for a yearly basis at $200 per year. And then all of those subsections within that section, information changed. And then actually getting into Section 15-147, the license tax. Peddlers and itinerant merchants, flea markets, as amended, clarifying subsection A, prior to engaging in and transacting any business within the town, all peddlers and itinerant merchants shall pay a license fee, secure a license issued by the town, which appears to be Leanne, and shall pay a license tax in accordance, excuse me, accord with Section 15-144, which you would be modifying in the previous paragraph. Repealing Sections 1, 2, and 3 under subsection A, which then led to all the, would be getting rid of, excuse me, all of the convoluted language about 24 hours. Each 24 hours is an additional fee. Gets rid of all that. Basically sets it at $20 for the issuance of a license, $20 per month. Straightforward. And the only thing then was under paragraph B, I think our original code intended flea markets to be outdoors. And so the only thing I've changed there is the word from at as a, to within. Peddlers and itinerant merchants doing business within a flea market because it's, again, indoors and really just clarifies that. That's the only change to paragraph B. And then under Section 15-148, it clarifies again, obtaining a business license. There was a discussion relative to who was going to be responsible. If you're going to run the flea market, your responsibility are all those people working or operating within it. He has to make sure everybody has a license, which they first have to come to Leanne and get that. It puts the control in Leanne's hands as the town treasurer, not within the flea market operator. Planning commission has, and we were saying, makes it more uniform and more manageable for the town treasurer. So it then reads as follows, "As a condition for operating flea markets in the corporate limits of the town, the flea market operator shall, prior to leasing any space or two or permitted, a peddler or itinerant merchant upon the property controlled by the flea market, require the peddler or itinerant merchant to obtain a business license, and the peddler or itinerant merchant shall pay a license tax pursuant to provisions of 15-44 prior to operating within the flea market." That funnels everything into Leanne. It only requires the operator to make sure that when they come in, they've already got the license that Leanne has issued, not that he has issued. It takes also the accountability away from him about who's operating on a day-to-day basis, how are they paying their tax? It puts the elements back on the individual peddler or itinerant merchant to come to Leanne first. And then it also, then Sections B and C, which were very similar to the old sections, about 24 hours and so on, are also to be repealed.
So do we need to set a public hearing to implement this change?
Well, that's, my position is that you already have a tax in place. This is basically a modification of that tax. It is not a new tax. It's redefined. So that's my personal opinion to it, whether or not you want to make this a public matter. To do this first, I think you could. In order to address it immediately, I think it'd be one where, and I know that Leanne would appreciate that as the town treasurer, that this be treated as a first reading, and that it be an emergency measure that needs to be voted on as well. So you pass it as an emergency, pass it, and pass it as an emergency, and then it take effect immediately.
And I mean, it would really help Leanne if it took, because there are... She's being asked lots of questions to which she doesn't have answers because she's relying on the way the code is.
So you're better off with the changes and everything? I mean, you're comfortable with everything?
I think that would be a more manageable way for us than here.
Okay.
Right now, she's still acting under the old code, and it's, it could be challenged several different ways by either the flea market operator or by the itinerant merchant peddler. And they use Leanne with a lot of gray, and I think it'll be fine. And just hopefully it will clean up.
Okay, so just to clarify, the folks, he has a business license now, talking about Morgan Ballz, right?
Yep.
And each person pays a 24-hour business license?
Under the current code, they do, yes. That's why Leanne is wanting to eliminate, requesting the planning commission and to you as council that that be eliminated.
Okay.
And we just do.
So where someone would previously, or currently, get a 24-hour license, now they'll get a monthly license?
That's what it's.
Or a yearly license?
Okay. They can get two months, they can get four months. They didn't for a year, they get a discount. Other places, $20 per month.
Okay, I just wanted to make.
The town is getting a tax from them that they weren't getting before. It stays within the statutory ceiling, $500 for that. It makes it a whole lot more manageable for your treasurer.
Simplified and made with, I don't know what that.
So you said we need to pass it, then pass as an emergency?
I think, for one, this would be the first reading. Otherwise, you'd do another reading next month.
Yeah, I got it.
And then you could then vote on it next month to pass it. Given the fact that this gentleman is already operating for anybody else that comes in, that could be July before it really takes effect. My recommendation to you would be, basically treat this as a first reading. A vote that if you pass, it's an emergency and for both. So you pass it tonight and do it.
So we're going to make a motion on that tonight?
Yeah, type a motion, basically it's the first reading motion, second, maybe wait, just as an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second to use this opportunity for the first reading? I've got it first. Any second? Any discussion? All in favor, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. So it has been treated as first reading. Now we need a motion to pass this as an emergency amendment change?
Do we need a motion to waive the second reading?
It's under the same thing, right?
It's under the same thing. Okay.
Go ahead.
Motion to waive the second reading and pass this under emergency amendment?
As an emergency ordinance.
As an emergency ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of making the amendment changes and passing as an emergency ordinance? Stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Good. Motion carries. Smile, Leanne.
Thank you.
Might get better for you, though.
So next is the amendment to Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles and Traffic Ordinance. First reading. Chief Mills.
Right, I'll take care of that one.
Okay.
I was charged the last meeting to come up with a, basically a draft to take care of the, what was reported being the parking problem issue with regard to overstays. And the muddy language we had in our existing code there again was, pass this as two different ordinances over a period, this is about 20 different years between the two. So what you have before you is basically after talking with Chief Mills, basically a clarification and a rewording of the existing two-hour violation and penalties portion, the two-hour parking ordinance we have in place that we put in place back in 2017, I think was when it was modified. Some of you may recall, we were on the council at that point in time. There was a relaxation of some of that two-hour ordinance was in place, particularly when we had places like the front porch, 7, Main Street, I guess it's the coffee shop, were being renovated and had to have either panel trucks, dumpsters, whatever, out on Main Street for a period of time in order to renovate their properties. So we addressed that issue to somewhat deal with extended or special permits. But now what you have before you is basically an amendment to the penalty section to clarify what consists of the first or second offense and also increase the actual amount for first and second offense. So for the first reading for this, this will be under our four stopping standing parking under Chapter 16 of Motor Vehicles and Traffic in Division 2, two-hour parking restriction. Be ordained by the Council of Town of Tazza, Virginia, pursuant to Sections 2-1 and 2-311 of the Charter of the Town of Tazza, and the Town of Tazza will hereby amend Sections 16-139 of Chapter 16, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, under the Code of the Town of Tazza regarding parking on Main Street. Section 16-139, violation and penalties, as amended, would read as follows. "Subparagraph A, it shall be unlawful for any person to violate any section of this division. Upon the first such violation, a ticket will be issued, and such person shall be fined not less than $25 for the first offense. Any person whose vehicle has been ticketed for a first violation and said vehicle remains for more than an additional posted limit in the same number of space will be ticketed for a second offense, and such person shall be fined not less than $50. Any third subsequent violation which occurs under the conditions set forth herein will result in an additional fine for each violation of not less than $50 for each offense." What that basically does, it went from, geez, correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of the amounts, it was 10 and 20, so it went from 25 to 50. It also clarified under our old code as to what a second offense really was. When did it occur and is said for a second offense? It didn't say when, it didn't say if you were given a ticket for two hours, if you were there for two hours and five minutes, you got another ticket, and in two hours and 10 minutes, you got another ticket. So this clarifies that it has to be a two-hour period. You have to be a subsequent two-hour period from the ticketed period to account for another $20, or excuse me, $25 ticket. Then paragraph B, it clarifies where, if you're to pay the town, "Any person found in violation of this division shall, in satisfaction of such fine, make the following payments to the town treasurer at Town Hall." Previously, it just said to the town treasurer, but it didn't say how you're supposed to do that where it was supposed to be to happen. So again, paragraphs one and two, change the amounts from 20 to 25, or excuse me, 10 to 25, 25 to, or 20 to 50. And then paragraph C stays the same. And then, given the fact that when we did the repeal of all the other sections, I think it was Sections 141, 42, 43, 44 back in 17, we got rid of dealing with the courts and talking with Chief Mills. And then what does that do if somebody gets two or three tickets and they don't pay them at all? What they did.
You're warned.
That's what, so paragraph D puts that back into the code. "Any person found in violation of any section of this division may be summoned to appear before the judge of the General District Court, and upon conviction shall be fined not less than $25 for the first offense and not less than $50 for a second subsequent offense." So then that's what it is. It's fine, don't change this by going to court. It gives the police the additional mechanism to collect. Of course, then they would also be assessed costs, which the state collects, the town doesn't get them.
I have a question.
That's basically where that sits.
Didn't we talk about extending the payment time past the 24 hours? I thought we talked about that.
We can? What would y'all like to see?
Well, I don't.
48, 17.
Well, I know when I was in, when I got parking tickets in Richmond.
You know, this is not going to run up there, like she writes tickets today, she's not going to run up there tomorrow, and you know, 24 hours later, they just summon you.
Right, well, I was just, because I know, yeah, I mean, I had gotten a few parking tickets in Richmond, and they would have, you know, you have, you pay this amount if it's paid within the first, you know, three days, something like that, and then it goes up if it's not paid after 10 days, or, you know, something.
And I guess the only, that watching that too, the only problem is that, and just to say it's not a problem, let's see, the other administrative issue you have, let's say they are late.
Right.
And you get it, instead of on the fourth day, you get it on the sixth. And so technically, they're late because it was due on the fifth day.
I am just thinking.
And so what does that do? What does Leanne need to do then? How are you going to collect that additional amount that you shouldn't have paid for being late?
You don't have a problem with somebody sending it in by mail too, to call.
Right, and then it's delayed.
Delayed, so what do you do there?
Well, I'm just wondering, because like. Well, and I'm just wondering, because like the 24 hours, you know, if somebody gets a parking ticket, they don't see it until 5:30, and then they're out of town, or, you know, it, it could become an issue that they can't get here to pay it within 24 hours.
What's the old code say? What did the old ones say?
This is 24 hours. 24 hours, and then you gotta look to this lady, folks, right now, the way it's written, what happens if they're 48 hours late? We don't have anything here that says that there's a problem with the payment. It just says they're supposed to pay it within 24 hours. I don't have any license, the old code doesn't have any license, and I didn't put it in, in this draft, that says if you are late, then you're gonna pay in addition. See, that's just something to consider. It's not, it wasn't in the old code.
Right.
I had made a change to accommodate that here, but from a practical standpoint, what are you wanting to do as a council if they are late and getting their payments? And so the whole, I guess the gist of it is you want them to be timely.
You want them to be timely in paying it, and I think that there just needs to be so, something in there saying, if it goes unpaid for a period of time, then the court comes into play.
And right, now that really, that's, that's really where D comes into play. It doesn't put a limitation, it doesn't, it just says, any person in violation of section may be summoned. And it puts it in the discretion of, of the town, your police chief or code enforcement as to when those summonings are issued, is it a week, if they don't pay within two weeks? Right now it says 24 hours, and the thing is, unless the ticket, I would assume, and I haven't seen, when Missy writes that ticket, it should have on the actual ticket form, you should pay it.
Well, it'll have.
It needs to be on there, as to when they should pay it. Uh, but then that's up to you guys if you wanna make it to where there is a time, if they don't pay within five days, an additional amount, and then what, that, then being come to apply Leanne, it was late, we have the additional $25, so then when they take it to court, they not only
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, I don't, I don't really care about the late fee. I just think, you know, I, not anything against Chief Mills, but I'm thinking it might need to be more defined as to when they would go to court.
Okay, so we'll bring it back next month. We'll make some modifications to it. Is that a consensus? Yeah, I just wonder about, you have people out of town, come tend to visit, and they park it there, you get a ticket, and they go back home.
Well, I mean, if, but if you don't have a late fee and they nail it in, then you're fine. You just need to, you know, say.
I mean, everybody gets a ticket, it's on your window, and it's not like we made one.
Right.
It's all right there. And if you're on Main Street doing business during the hours that we issue them, our town hops to the local, so I mean, there's no reason they can't come down here, pay the ticket on the day it happens.
Is there a consensus? Uh, we can bring it back, what I'm getting at, we can.
I think we should bring it back.
Can I get one more?
I just.
Yeah, we can bring it back.
I just think it has some direction.
Alright, so what we?
I would say, um, any, you know, what, what time period do you all think would be acceptable? In the minutes from last month, you all had discussed 10 days.
10 days? That's enough time for a judge to make a decision, guilty or not guilty.
Well, that's to pay the parking ticket.
That's not, that's to go get the summons, but if you tell me 10 days.
If you don't pay on the 10th day, the summons is issued.
Yes.
That's it.
A summons would, a summons would be issued.
Yeah, yeah.
That's gonna tie you up in reference to waiting 10 days and come back and write up the, the, the summons or warrants.
Well, I mean, really, the way this is gonna be used in effect is the, the people that are the worst offenders are who you're gonna go after. I just think that you need to have that, that little bit.
If it's gonna happen, I'm gonna give everybody that gets a ticket that's getting summons to that day. It's not the worst, it's everybody.
Okay.
No, you're not gonna pick choose, that's interesting.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna pick and choose just because somebody gets one, and then you got one, somebody's got five, I'm gonna do a bit to one and the five. Cause that's the only fair way to do it.
Right.
So we'll bring it back, if we're consensus, we'll bring it back and we'll put more consideration into it, and, uh, we'll absolutely look at the 10-day.
Okay, if Brad has any questions from council, can he just email and?
Absolutely. You all have me suggesting what you want to consider for discretion, and I'll be, and then I can talk with Chief Mills about it.
Chief, you ever have a, a ga, a time guideline as to this many days?
Yeah, the problem, the problem we've got.
I work whenever you want.
Is, is the technology to do it right is astronomically expensive.
Right.
So that's what we're trying to dodge.
It's thousands and thousands of dollars that we decide.
So Missy goes up there with a, a little board and a table. Yeah, so the technology to do, and what y'all are talking about is exactly the way it should be done, but it's just that we're too tight to spend the money.
So if I'm hearing everybody correctly.
It's not feasible.
We just look at extending the amount of time they have to pay, it's just going.
Well, it's not extended the amount of time to pay, you know, you're still requesting them to pay within that first 24 hours, but if they're in violation in excess of 30 days, 60 days, you know, whatever time period it is, then you may make a court.
So that's where the 10-day can even play in, that you.
No, the, the 10 days from the past time was just talking about, you know, the, the increase. But, you know, most businesses give you 30 days to pay if you're on a, a summon date.
That's gonna, that's gonna create me a lot, a lot of paperwork for her, wait 30 days before she goes to get a summons.
What's your best idea? What, what do you think?
Well.
Cause we wanna make.
What'd you get from that, yeah?
Well, like I'm saying, it's just what, what the chief wants to do, I mean, I wanna hear what.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you, Missy's, if you get a ticket today or tomorrow, she's not going up there the day after you get a ticket to get the summons. I'm sure she's gonna get some of them together before she would go up and do it. I mean, if you have to come in front of an extra, and you know, and you just go in front of an extra, you have to fill out paperwork, and they have to issue papers, so it might be a day or two before we ever actually get them back.
It is written out, folks, in a minimalist, basically standard. If 24 hours, if they don't, it puts the discretion with the police department. Then if they don't pay within, or if they haven't paid within 10 days, five days, 30 days. All it is is 24 hours at this point. If they don't pay within 24 hours, they can be sentenced to going to court, the way the statute now exists. And it gives them the discretion. And I think it's enforceable as such. You pay it, and granted, I guess they could come in and try to challenge, say, well, I didn't have enough time to pay it, 24 hours wasn't enough, and then the court would have to make a decision on that. So that's the only thing I can see where there's any flexibility or latitude. That court might give them, I still think it's one where you had 24 hours to pay it. Missy's gonna know, I didn't take out the summons, violation was on May 1, on May 21, I went to court and got a summons because I hadn't paid in three weeks. They can't come in and argue, the judge will, 24 hours wasn't enough, well, you, this summons wasn't written until three weeks after you did that, why didn't you pay it? And that's why it's written in very basic standard now, so it gives the police enforceability, it gives a managerial ease to deal with Leanne and code enforcement, I think.
I can make it work. I, I can give you an example, I mean, the first time we talked about this, I had, I think she had 100 and some tickets in like 20, 20-something days. Until we got some of the major violators, there was only like 16 people that paid. So it, it creates a big problem. I mean, she walks up down the street religiously every day, so, and it's not fair to the business owners up there to let people get away with this. Now, I think we need to enforce it, I'm not, I think, I'm not going up there the day after somebody gets a violation and get a summons on them. We'll give them some time. I mean, it's not gonna happen immediately, but like Brad said, you know, how long do you wait before you do it?
With the way it's written out, it seems like the people that intend on paying would pay in the first day or two.
Yeah, first day.
Right.
First day, 24 hour period, and, and.
Then I could, uh, Missy go get how many that's not paid, get the warrants, stack it.
And that, I do like the way it's written to give, you wait, we managerial wait, because.
See, the way it was for a $10, a $10 summons, and I send it to Richmond, or I send it to Virginia Beach, then you won't get nowhere to send a $10 summons. If I send them 25 or 50, they're more likely gonna be more obligated to get served. And we do have people that are out of town, out of state to do this.
Are we ready to go ahead and pass it tonight as presented?
We just go it out tonight unless you do the same thing, I just give the facts on this, this is the first reading.
I mean, we're giving, giving the discretion to the police.
Alright, fine.
I make a motion to.
This is the first reading.
First reading.
It's just the first.
Oh, we don't have to make a motion, I count it as a first reading.
Unless you want, unless you want, yeah, I don't know if this, unlike the situation where you've got an existing business where you don't have the code to apply, and you get it from a way, this is some.
Okay, that's just what you're.
If you're all called, so if you wanna, you all can't pass it as much as you would consider, I would recommend.
Okay, I love the carries. Just moving forward with the first reading.
Move forward to the next reading.
Brad, I wanna make sure Councilmember Davis is okay with moving forward.
Well, I mean, I would say, I would still like to see any person found in violation of any section of this division in excess of 10 days. I mean, they.
Does, does that have hurt, you know, or department in a bond to? They have to do that on a Tuesday?
No, nope.
No, they don't, they don't have to do it then, and it still may be summoned. So, I mean, it's still there, but then it gives the.
Offender.
The, yeah, it gives the offender notice that, you know, if you don't pay this in 10 days, we're gonna come after you. But it gives, sounds like I'll say I've got 10 days, I'll do that later. That's the only thing.
I think we've got inputs from everybody, kinda get a feel for what you, and we, I see it, so, listen, bring it back, love bringing it back to you with some language that you can read and touch and feel, and, you know, no hurry to do this.
Now, sir, uh, can we bounce it back and forth?
Yeah.
We're not gonna tell council meetings, so we, we're all on the same page when we.
Yeah, we can, we'll, you build it out, Brad, Brad will send me a draft in a day or two, a week or so, and I'll send it out.
I think Brad's still waiting for a little bit of, of direction.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, I would like to have some, if you wanna go change to it. But I'm, what I'm hearing is changing the time for what they got to pay.
Right.
I'm actually hearing 10, and then I heard from the other three, okay, like it is, so that's where we're told we're at. So, I, I, if someone's gotta give and take here a little bit, so what we can do is we can come back with the 10-day draft, and I think it's acceptable. It's not, issue heard from the chief, it's not gonna hurt you, but, so, but, man, we'll put it in there, let you reevaluate it, I'll email it out.
So will, next month have to be another first reading, or?
No, you already have a first reading, the primary ordinance, you go through, make those changes.
Okay. Fair enough. So what's for everybody?
Bring it to us, babe, bring it to us.
Just to be clear, I'm okay with where it is, or I'm okay with 10 days, I mean.
You'll be good with 10 days.
Okay, so, uh, moving on to, uh, no miscellaneous, I don't think. The new business, the Twin Depot commemorative naming of Route 61. So I have a resolution here that's rather lengthy, so bear with me as I read this prior to a vote. So the resolution states, whereas Virginia State Primary Route 61 is one of the shortest primary routes in the Commonwealth and transverses through only three counties, Giles County and Tassel County. And whereas one end of Virginia 61 lies just across the Norfolk Southern tracks within eyesight of the Tassel Train Station, while the other terminus of Virginia 61 lies just across the New River with eyesight of the Narrows Train Station. And whereas these two depots were built with the same blueprint and stand today as two identical stations just 48 miles apart. And whereas Virginia 61 was first labeled 61 in 1933 with the advent of modern roads, several secondary routes were tied together in the shadow of the Buckhorn and East River Mountains during the first half of the 20th century. And whereas by 1948, one uninterrupted Route 61 connected the towns of Narrows and Giles County and North Tassau and Tassel County. And whereas today, Virginia 61 begins at an intersection with Virginia 16 in the north Tassel neighborhood of Town of Tassau and just across the Norfolk Southern Clinch Valley line tracks from the Tassel Train Station. And whereas the route continues east along Riverside Drive, parallel to the Clinch River, Virginia 61 passes through a four-ramp partial cleverly interchange with US 19 and US 460 to the neighborhood of Fourway. Here, the route passes by Tassel's Lincolnshire Park, Lincolnshire Pool, and Tassel Aquapark. Then the highway turns south, that's Freedom Drive, meets a Norfolk Southern railway, rail line in grade and crosses the Norfolk Clinch River, or North Folk Clinch River just south of the river and just east of the confluence of North and South Forks to Form. The main river, Virginia 61 intersects US 19 Business and US 460 Business, Big Castle Turnpike. And whereas Virginia 61 leads the Town of Tassau and curves to the east to the, to follow the South Fork Clinch River through Clinch Valley between Buckhorn Mountain to the north and Rich Mountain to the south. And whereas Virginia 61 passes the origin of the Clinch River's South Fork at the Tennessee Valley Divide in the community of Grattan, where the highway intersects Virginia 623, Berks Garden Road, which leads over Rich Mountain to Berks Garden. Virginia 61 continues east along Clearport of the Wolf Creek through community of Shelburne Mill and enters Blaine County. And whereas the state highway continues east as Clearport Creek Road, which passes through Stowersville on the way to Rocky Gap. Here, Virginia 61 has a short concurrent with US 52 and briefly expands to a four-lane divided highway through a diamond interchange with I-77. The two highways make a sharp turn north, then split in Rocky Gap where the Clearport enters Wolf Creek. And whereas Virginia 61 continues east as Wolf Creek Road through the valley of Wolf Creek between Buckhorn Mountain to the north and Wolf Creek Mountain to the south. And whereas the highway passes through Round Bottom and enters Giles County. And whereas Virginia 61 passes through several small communities its way to Narrows, the state highway enters the town's Park Drive, passing the Narrows Town Park on Wolf Creek and continuing as Monroe Street. North of its intersection with Virginia 100, Main Street, Virginia 61 continues as MacArthur Lane, which passes under a Norfolk Southern rail line and crosses over the New River and US 460, Virginia Avenue. And whereas the state highway turns east into Fleishman Street and turns south to reach its eastern terminus at an intersection with US 460 just across the New River from the Narrows Train Station. Much of the route passes through southwest Virginia farmland. Following the Clinch River, the Clearport of Wolf Creek and Wolf Creek itself, the highway provides sweeping views of mountains and valleys through the three-county region. And whereas amazing views are plentiful along the route, which include Virginia's highest valley and largest rural historic district, Berks Garden, and the beauty of trees that canopy the Giles County section along Wolf Creek Valley. Whereas Section 33.2-213 of Code of Virginia authorizes the Commonwealth Transportation Board to give suitable names to state highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities, and change the name of any highway, bridges, interchanges, or other transportation facilities forming a part of the system of state highways. And whereas Section 33.2-213 provides that Virginia Department of Transportation shall place and maintain appropriate signs indicating the names of highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities named by the CTV, and require that the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining such signs shall be paid by the localities in which they are located. Now therefore be resolved that Town of Tassau, in accordance with Section 33.2-213 of Code of Virginia, does hereby request that CTV name the highway on Route 61 Riverside Drive, Benbold Avenue and Grattan Road from the intersection of Tassel Avenue Riverside Drive at the North Tassel Post Office to the Route 16 Eastern Corporate Limits, which is located near the Four Seasons YMCA in the Town of Tassau as the Twin Depot, Depot Trail. Be a further resolved that Town of Tassau agrees to pay the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining the signs, calling attention to this name. So, uh, we need a motion to pass the resolution to change the name to Twin Depot Trail.
I got one, one addition.
Okay.
Um, it's Twin Depot Parkway. I apologize for that.
Okay.
Now, it, it may be, it may be that V dot. We, we had another route, we had another name, and it kinda conflicted with some of their standards, so I won't cancel or know. It's a Twin Depot. Um, it, it may change again, but I'll let you know via, via email if it changes. But if it does.
But if it does change, do V-Dot.
Okay. So... So, need a motion to, uh...
Is that correct?
And you want V-Twin Depot whatever?
Yeah. But we're looking at Parkway was the last agreement, is that correct? So, that's my fault, I apologize for leaving trails in there, it's Twin Depot Parkway.
Okay, so I need a motion to...
This name, this naming does not change any street names.
No, no, it does not.
It's just the area.
Yeah, it's like back in the day.
It's an overlay.
So, I need a motion to pass the resolution to change the area to Twin Depot Parkway, which is...
I saw a move.
Now, get a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please, sir, by saying aye? All opposed, say so by saying nay? All right, resolution passes. So, next we have a budget amendment approval, Madam Day and Mr. Reagan.
Okay, well, she's getting that prepared to go over, I just want to kind of bring you briefly up to date. If you'll recall, we did, and we have, closed on Sunnyside. In order to do that, Jonathan Bell should see them, forwarded us the money prior to closing. We had to use a line of credit to purchase the building, and then CPROC refunded that. Ironically, CPROC actually put it in the mail before we ever went that route, but we had a line of credit open for maybe three days at most, and we've sent them paid off, using the lines of credit, using the funds.
So, you said Jonathan Bell, so we've received both?
Oh, yeah, we've received both of them, and it's fully paid for with grant funds, no local tax dollars whatsoever were spent on that purchase. So, I'll let Leanne pick up, she does the magic on how we can get it through the order without a fuss, without fussing, but that's the gist of it.
Okay, so as he said, we did draw from the line of credit, just temporarily, so that is the town's line of credit. So, then the town had to let the IDA borrow that. So, I had to do a journal entry to show that. So, that is step one and two of your budget amendment. Then, we did get a hundred thousand dollars from Vasita, so that was used in the purchase. We didn't have to draw that portion out of her line of credit. So, we did do a cashier's check to Gillespie Hart, Altizer, and Whitesel for the purchase. Once the IEDA received the $200,000 from Cumberland Plateau Planning District, it was deposited, and then the funds were transferred back to the Town of Tassle from the IEDA. And everything is now back to zero as it was before.
So, you just need to approve that budget amendment that she had?
Unless she would like to, you know, dig into it.
No, I will make a motion to approve that budget amendment.
One second. Any discussion?
I got one clarification I want to make. I said there's no local tax dollars in the purchase of that building, which is 100% correct. There's staff time, there's legal fees at all levels.
Okay, any other discussions? All in favor of passing the changes to, or making, or passing the budget amendment, stay so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay? Okay, budget amendment approved. Next is a water leak adjustment request, Madam Day.
Okay, sometime back, council had a lengthy discussion on the amount of water adjustments that an individual can receive, and I've had the ability over the years to negotiate due to unforeseen situations that kind of go over beyond what council approved, so first time it sort of happened, but this individual is wanting consideration for a second adjustment that I can't approve, nor are there any unusual circumstances such as high pressures, us working in the etc., etc., that I can find to handle it in-house or administer it in-house. So, we feel like that there's a leak, she's aware that there's a leak. She got a, she got an adjustment on a leak, on a leak. She's been out of town for medical reasons, and during that time, the leak is still leaking. And I've had a number of communications with her, but I don't have the authority under this situation, so she's wanting consideration. If you're wanting us to make that adjustment, again, it would differ from your guideline, so all I need is a motion to proceed to make the adjustment. That's all you have to say. If you don't say a word, we can move on to the next issue on the agenda. That's all I've got in there.
Okay, moving on to the, next, the update of employment, Madam Day.
Okay, when I said updated employment, I probably should have worked that a little different, but I had this conversation in the work session, and I just wanted to let y'all know that we're struggling when it comes to employment. I've sent a number of emails out, we've got it listed, I think Rob and I got it on all kind of social media, but we're doing everything we can to fill temporary slots, part-time slots. So, I've got grass on the right-ofways, it's, you know, it's up to your needs, literally. And I know it's there. I've got sidewalk issues with, with, you know, from the chipper during the snow, so I know they're there. I've got full-time employees that are weeding, cutting grass at the park, and we are struggling to find people that will work. So, also with EMS, we've, as we discussed in the work session, we've raised those rates to make us, we were the lowest paid in the county up until, well, it'll be active next week, so other than the private sector, we will be even with the county in the public sector, so... And the reason we can't attract an EMS is number one, that, but number two, we need to do transports, and that's not very attractive. So, people would rather sit at a rescue squad and wait for a 911 call than come to work for the Town of Tassle and know they're gonna be hitting the road, but we're doing a lot of transports, and that's what's paying them, that's what's bringing in the money. That's how we're staying afloat. So, we're also, we're also implementing a bonus for transport reasons, and those bonuses go as high as, I think it's $50 for over 300 miles. For a 300-mile trip, it's a long way.
So, is it a DC?
Yeah, and so it's a $50 bonus, and from zero to 50 miles, it's nothing, there's no bonus. So, we're trying to make it to where we can survive and be competitive and get people with EMS, but the whole idea is, I just want to cancel, to know we're trying, I'm just asking for your understanding, and I know you're getting complacent, and we're still patching, we're still working on the trail. Instead of having, instead of having six people patching, getting a lot of work done, I've got nothing, you know? So, we're behind, and it looks like, I know that the federal government changed their guidelines on triple P, so the letter that went out this week, I know that none of the people are got them, so hopefully we'll be able to pick up some employment, but I just want to let y'all know, I'm very much aware that our town conmedetically leaves a little bit to be desired, but we're trying.
Let's all look at it. Any comments?
I just wondered about the grass that's so high up there on... Tower Street and View Hills and around that area, it's getting way out of control on the high grass. And I think the neighbors up there should be able to cut their grass, it's just way too high.
Yeah, are you saying people's grass?
Yeah, the grass central and on the side of the river.
Oh, there's no question about it, and trust me, it's hard to write a letter to an individual when our right-ofway is that... So, we're very sensitive to that, and as I stated, we're doing everything we can to keep...
Do I have a singing up there?
Oh, yeah.
Just give me a weed eater. I've got, I've got all your pieces of equipment coming.
We got that on camera.
It's got my boots, my bikes, and I'm a worker.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Go on up there with the weed eater, they'll get you one, I'm sure.
You have a weed, I see a weed.
Dave's volunteer.
I'll volunteer to cut, because I'm retiring here in June.
Thanks for that thought, any additional comment? So, next is the Historic Review Board nomination. The name presented to us was Quadine Marshall. So, if we can get a motion to nominate her for the Historic Review Board?
I'll make that motion.
You get a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor of Quadine Marshall being a member of the Historic Review Board, stay so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay?
We will send her the letter tomorrow, I'll let you know via email.
Brett, has anybody signed it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next is the council comments, kind of a free-for-all, if you have anything that you'd like to bring up?
It's a free-for-all. I just wanted to bring up one thing, I did have an individual come up and... I have, not necessarily a question, but a suggestion for the recycling area. They were wondering if we could get an additional dumpster there and then still be open on Sunday, so I just thought I would bring it forward.
For Sunday?
Yeah, so...
So, you want to go seven days a week?
We were doing seven days a week for a very short time, yes, we were.
Yeah, we were, y'all changed it, so I respect the way she brought this forward, she did with...
Well, that's what I've been wanting to do for a long time.
What, go seven days a week?
Seven, seven days.
Yep. Well, I did have an individual that would like to suggest that, and they said that they had seen lots of people up there on Sunday trying to use it, so... And they had suggested maybe with the addition of additional dumpster, because the town does have the issue with the trash piling up over the weekend, that maybe that would be a feasibility.
So, if it's open on Sundays, do we have to have a town person who was wrongly beat off on a Sunday, have to go manage to make that? That's my only fear, it's they work, they pop off anyway.
Do they have to be able to maintain it, or...
They just, like, we were in seven days a week, and I'm trying to think back, but the issue we were having was, on Saturday, they'll fill up, it was the holidays, we really get, so our landfill is closed on Sunday, so we couldn't dump the dumpsters, and they would just...
I remember I had to close early on Saturdays, you had to do an early dump on Saturday, so you had a full day and a half that you could get to it.
Yeah. So, Sundays were, you know, it's not impossible, you know, and we can even, like, if council wants to, like, for holidays, try to make some exceptions. But Sundays were just really hard to manage to trash.
Well, and I think it was the anticipation of summer coming up and longer days and more people doing stuff, and...
That's it, yeah, I mean, they are, it amplifies the problem. The problem in the wintertime, 24/7, 565 is there, but as you stated, in the summertime, it's amplified. So, and we could justify shutting it down in the wintertime on Sundays, but in the summertime, it's just twice the reason.
Yeah.
So...
Well, and smell travels in the summer.
Yeah.
So, do we want to revisit that as part of the agenda for next time to discuss if we want to record, or do we want...
It's up to you guys.
That is conflicting, I mean, I don't even know if it would be feasible to even get another dumpster in there, so that would be something that would be entirely...
We could, we just have to shuffle stuff, we just have to move it around, so, you know, there's nothing that's impossible. We can, we can, we can make it happen, but I tell you, these guys can make it happen, but... It's just another view to consider.
Right.
I'm gonna stop at your house one day a week, anyway. And there's five other days a week, and you guys really need some time off. So, just something for you to think about, we'll do whatever you guys want to do. And if you want it on the next agenda to discuss, absolutely put it on there.
So, I'll let you guys.
Let's discuss it.
Okay, I'll add it back on the next agenda.
I mean, the guys are really working hard. I just got a question about the parking on Main Street, on the corner of Marion Avenue and where Serena's Restaurant located. The box trucks, big trucks that are parked on the corner, I have an issue about a car pulling out, I almost hit a motorcycle. He said he was at fault, I mean, he almost hit his motorcycle, because of blindside. They had to inch out and inch out, and the motorcycle's coming out through there, and he just about made contact with it.
So, he was coming off of Marion on the Main Street, the motorcycle was eastbound?
The car was, the car was coming off Marion on the Main Street, the motorcycle was heading...
And it was a box car sitting on the corner?
It's a box truck, it's a big truck.
And the motorcycle was eastbound?
Yeah.
But they were moving, and they had a U-Haul set there for it. They were backing port with the U-Haul, probably when it was.
Yeah, because it's, it's just something...
Very seldom there's someone sitting there, because there's no businesses to deliver there, right?
But when it starts back up, if it ever gets started back up, that's, you know, look into it, because it...
I think that was when Serena's was moved, and they had the U-Haul up there.
That's probably what stopped it.
Yeah, that's probably what happened.
You have that at every single intersection in the fancy area of Richmond.
There is, every intersection is a blindside, you just have to gamble on it, pull out.
Coming out of the bank is, coming out of any other intersection can be tight, and we actually, our parking space will need V-Dot specs, but the setbacks at the intersection have never been challenged, they don't need them. Matter of fact, you'd probably lose...
I'm just saying for the safety of the motorcycle.
Yeah, you'd lose probably two at every intersection.
Plus a vehicle.
Yeah, but like I'm saying, you got a lot of motorcycles coming in town now, and we want to make safety.
I tell you what we can go back to doing, and we, I don't know why we quit, but we used to put the cones, the little spring-loaded cones.
I get those things every time I pull off Marion Avenue, because I drive a truck.
The pedestrian cones, where I have the idea?
Amber, no.
I don't even know where that one is now.
Jack Burroughs. They thought it was the best thing going. Eat eggs with a bat.
I ate them too, that's...
Do you work on Main Street, do those things work? They slow the traffic down?
Oh, absolutely, that is...
If you had to work on Main Street, it'd be all right.
Walking to the front of people to see them, they do slow down.
They do work. They don't stop when somebody crosses.
No.
No.
Have you checked my watchware? Lights that you can put in the pavement that flash?
Like, yeah.
Nighttime, or even during the day, I notice them, if we're there, in the crosswalks.
Those things have it there. There's things we can do, you know, mainly a lot of things come on. Our Main Street is much less like Whipple, somebody had some foresight in Whipple years ago.
They're wide there.
Oh, my God, yes. But we have a really narrow, narrow Main Street to have parking on both sides, so to put those things up in the middle, there's a reason they slow down, and it's not out of respect for pedestrians. They'll slow down for whatever... Whatever it takes. Whatever it takes.
A new truck comes through, it's hard.
Yeah. All right, anything else? I get a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
I just second.
Second.
All in favor, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Okay, meeting adjourned.